Well, I'm happy to say this is my first time. But... And, uh, once again, I'm proud and happy to be here. And that's just what we're talking about. Taking... I think it's very important to, uh, to involve any of the... To involve any of the... Anything that's in the... Yeah. Last year, when we came up with a new... Party, uh, we did some... Uh, like, uh... And doing that, uh, in a small way. Also, um, you can immediately... Um, to... About seventy-five, you know, you're... And you're expecting, uh, that you... That you're... So, if you see, uh, you have to... Uh... You can't be, uh, really, uh... Really, uh, uh... Yeah. You mean, it's like a field for all of this. You don't get this. Because why? So, you remember, uh, in... In the... Because you can only, uh, work, uh... You can just talk. So, yeah, uh, something that you... You don't do, uh... You don't do, uh... Much of it. You get to talk. You get to, uh, talk to the... You already talk. When, uh, um... You get to talk to the... Right now. And you're... You're... You're starting to... Be about... This is what... So, this, uh, this is not, uh, a... Uh, getting, uh, getting, uh, you know... That's on, uh, which is what I would... That's what I'm... One...
Okay, so, uh, we see two, both of them. The capital, uh, one, two. Origin one, everyone, uh, three months. It's going to be, uh, beautiful. First one is, uh, two, seven. This is the, uh... Small one. You see, that's finding that in common. This gives me the full service point. I'll be coming then I'll explain it. How are they, uh, we accept the going on, uh, in... Finding application. I would consider that probably, uh, if you're going under open... And if it's a part of your... Then you're good kind of people. So, at the beginning of this thing, Gary, we were looking at the package. Based upon family income, uh, side of the household. You're either in the category of three months, two months, uh, you do something. When we notice that there were problems or... New cases here, there, and you guys, pretty much, pretty... Who wants to give you the due to... So, either, uh, basically, uh... So, the market, uh, they can come into our... Definitely, that we need to review, um... I don't kind of, I don't have a lot of any, uh, digital calculation in that. Uh, and the other thing... Both of my experience that we're... Coming, you're... After, uh, you know, being, uh, uh... That's what I'm saying. Um, it's not our patient. Yet we see, see that the, uh, the actual health... Change, and that we rely on the cost. That's how we, uh, we, uh, we, uh, stake, we get... This is what happened to me, uh, the actual activity. And, uh, what? The, uh, um... Like to give you a... This has been, um, actually, uh... Uh, because of, I will, sometimes, be, uh, believe... It's very messy. And it's difficult, uh, by, uh, the network. But I will share the, uh, the, uh, the... And, uh, from both, uh, these, uh, 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 thing. So, basically, what it's in the application today, uh, I'm sorry. And as I say, it's a snapshot as of, uh, a couple of years. And what we find is, uh, snapshots, uh, to, uh, uh... Ten years ago, fifteen years ago, it was supposed to be used, um... To compare and estimate. Uh, that never occurred. Because of too much of the, uh, fact, uh, that's why. Uh, but if you think you still use it, and you think you still have a jacket... Whether that's through the, uh, student thing, you implemented something, um... But basically, what happened is that, uh, we were different, uh, in, um... So, that's all I have on the conversation. By the way, that's a... I can use the box. Um... He... On, uh, page, instruction, uh, this is the article. Access surplus hack edition will be impaired from state, uh, download from the website. At optimal... The, uh, access surplus hack edition is based upon fourth number, which is your two percent number. It's based upon the general policy, uh, that... That's the thought. Some of the new knowledge, um, you will, uh, uh... Then you adjust before PKF, ten years, thirty, twenty, after, uh, the... Recent, those get deducted out when you're not... Twenty-nine, twenty-four, or twenty-one, uh... A proper leasing of three and a half. So, you know, help, uh, to, uh, kind of, uh, uh... So, what you left, uh, when you adjust number of seventy-seven dollars. Two percent number was one million, one. And you were about, uh, a seventy thousand dollars. On the next page, which were... Actually ordinary rate that you spend a budget of forty million dollars. And, uh, forty... Forty thousand dollars. And a physical non-publicity, uh, uh, uh... But it was, uh, um, hundred plus that, uh... So, what happens is that that money, excess money, that you budget, is most relative by that. Line distance from spending, uh, you're putting in the budgets, so what happened is you're not paying. You put, uh, you put a different budget, and you sold it to a hundred thousand dollars. And basically, they're saying, uh, give me this money, go back to head of line, you... You can, uh, you can, uh... So, they're giving you that, that seventy thousand dollars, uh, adjustment. What you left is the actual two percent number. With the, uh, one million point one hundred fifty nine, uh, uh, uh... On the bottom, section two, we get actual fund balance, uh, nine million five hundred ten. Of which, eight hundred and sixty-four thousand was publiced, for the quarters, and for the thirtieth, uh, uh, this quarter. Uh, you have, you don't, you don't need to skip the access surplus spending unit, something, uh, expenditures. What that is, is the money that we have, that we're budgeting this year, that we access, uh, each year. And, uh, follow the script for fund balances. Then, on the next page, on the sixteen, on the bottom. The property reserve is two million four ninety-nine, and you have a little bit of, uh, up to, uh, uh, thousand. That's two hundred eight, and that's part of your fund balance. Um, so what you left with is one million point four seven, and you're only allowed one million point one. So, you see, the next page, here, I'm going to pop. And structure method. About two million six thousand four hundred dollars. The part of that, basically, is in, uh... What do you need that money to, uh, to your budget and fund balance for the, uh, fifty, sixteen, period? But that's the minimum amount, seventy-six point, uh, they have to, uh, fund that. And that's all I have on the... The last statement. And, uh, thank you for, uh... And what did you... I'd like to know if you... Know if you...
Okay, first report that the... Okay, tonight's meeting is significant, and the first one for Mr. Sheikah. I'd like to say congratulations, and thank you for joining us. We all, uh, with you. It is also significant, and it is on last, uh, for Mr. Green Mountain, Mr. Matthew Owen. On behalf of the board, I'd also like to thank both of them, for doing their service to the rest of the community. Um, I want to make the board aware of our schedule come January. There are three Tuesday meetings in the month that we have to meet. On January sixth, for the board, January thirteenth, for the committee meetings, and then a regular workshop meeting on the twentieth. Please, please, please mark your calendars. I've scheduled the Jersey School Board's attorneys to meet with us on January thirteenth, for the committees, to discuss, discuss setting our negotiations forward. On the twentieth, I have set up, uh, board ethics and compliance training with the regular meeting. Please mark your calendars on that as well, and I hope especially on the candidate signal, this morning, and, uh... Uh, recently, uh, the board received a letter from the county superintendent. With his opinion and orders on filling, uh, valuing the Guinness's vacant seat in January. At this point in time, I'm going to turn it over to our attorney, Joe Zelli, and have him explain the letter to the board.
As you heard, Mrs. Kepley has estimated update from the public and the board, who, um, will not aware of any... Um, of the interim executive county superintendent regarding Mrs. Guinness's vacancy. As you know, her, uh, name remains unvalid for last month's election. Uh, due to some timing issues, uh, like her data passing, when they finalize the ballots. So, she actually won the election. And obviously, there's a vacancy for next month's reorganization meeting, and her, uh, uh, that's just left. Recently, about a week ago, we received a letter from the interim executive county superintendent, uh, informing us that he was exercising his authority... And was appointing, uh, an individual to the board's, uh, vacancy. So, he has appointed Mr. Gable, sitting in the front row. Uh, the seat to be filled, uh, will be for one year, and then the remaining vacancy will be unvalid next November, this coming November, uh, for the election. So, we're going to, uh, according to interim executive county superintendent, serving for one year, uh, on the board, and then we're spreading some product after that. County superintendent's not actually put forth reasons for, uh, doing this, but, um, he does a may. That's, uh, where we are, so, we're going to be, um, on the board in the next area of meeting. Welcome.
Thank you. Chip. Just maybe. Um, okay. I'm just... Um, that's all I have for now. I enjoy the winter break, and I'd like to wish all happy holidays, and be safe when it comes during the pandemic. And then hit your clock with the... Adios. Budget. Favor. This is... Okay, I have, um, names here. Derek Please.
I have... I have two. Second? Derek Please, C.A.L.I.S.E., two oh one month ago. Dear sober board, we are looking for you to present your relationship with our important... Intention following our... It's very concerning to be involved in, uh, the office. Tonight, I stand for the board, and once again, ask for your consideration, and ask for your official authority, as to this... This request is not only having a duty of importance to the nation, to take other's, uh, and also asking pay for a man's... Initially posed by not committing a cost by side, and on top of that side, and this is something considered unique outside. However, after reviewing the initiative, it is important to make a compromise. It's important to know what was meant by compromise, compromise as ten, asking character costs out of the board and bank. Because school and outside players, uh, uh... The condition of body is based on budget dollars per seat. The two little high schools, allowing a, uh, nine dozen, ninety-five thousand five hundred dollars in, uh, outside payment. This amount of these fifty-five thousand dollars for outside, in the year, uh, the previous hours, and... Most of that bucks in nine feet of inner country, with the skill alone, one three miles later. Each player pays six hundred fifty dollars for this day. The safe value, we can only have to, uh, 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 forty-five thousand dollars for any kind of loan. Which includes the two practices we leave in all four years. Unfortunately, the information regarding that total value now there, the funding, that is, forty thousand dollars. These two safe value charges, three hundred dollars for this payment. The left-hand high school outside program receives thirty thousand dollars for three practices we need, in the, uh, all four years ahead. Again, unfortunately, the information regarding the total value now there, the funding, that is, forty thousand dollars. Often, usually, that goes in thirty years of financing. Fifty, uh, packages, a zero dollar investment. The vacant high school office, from its twenty-five thousand parking lot, will increase this. Again, I was waiting for you to see, quoting the business agreement, uh, to the board. However, I did learn that making an outside player pay three hundred dollars for, uh, participating programs. As I mentioned about both of them, West Milbrook High School program currently pays one thousand three hundred dollars for participating programs. We saw another to save time, uh, personal outside program, in Westmore Creek, nineteen years after the program is still in... This, uh, and reflecting the corporate economy, uh, the cover the cost of lifetime, for one practice we need in all four years. The total cost of this spend is seventy-two thousand dollars. How can the individual money for the ice support, ice, uh, brings our program, or their high school hockey program, uh... Whether it grow our program, moving, uh, players, moving, uh, to support to make the decision, uh... You consider the equity and value dollars you could use, uh, in your left-hand kind of high cost. The one that you're going to prepare, it's amazing, and you're successful, and you're successfully... And you have successfully, uh, uh, uh... Thank you very much.
You, you are right. Um, number ten is recognition superintendent's agree to offset the cost of ice time he supported West Milbrook High School hockey team. And we had a five thousand dollars for two thousand fourteen, uh... Okay, um, this is for Tina.
Good evening. Deborah Bateen, I'm here tonight, but... I'm here, and, um... Good evening. I am here, joined by my, uh, colleagues, the medical, uh, the hunting, uh, supervisors. Some of whom are back in employment, others who are not. As a collective, however, we welcome, uh, the thinking of, uh, the, uh, the, uh... And I work together, uh, with the government, and of course, uh, the community. This is our only training, training, since we promised to that day. We receive broadcast information, dead messages, announcements, and statements, requirements, and laws, policies, and regulations. We read professional journals, and people in education services, uh, at the, uh, regional national level. People that tell us where we should be, what we should and should not be, which are true. See, and it's a team, and have to ensure all of this is actually done. Which maybe everyone didn't, uh, 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 but still, uh... The municipal is changing, our real pressure, some men are, uh, being very long-term, uh, uh... The administrators at the building and education program, uh, to pay to know, that we are committed to that task, as a professional group of four, and ten, uh, uh... We are all part of the same, uh, community, and share the same goal, and in life, uh, uh...
Thank you very much. So, again, I emphasize the fact that it's a pleasure to be here, and I enjoy our working relationships so far, and I'm sure we can build upon that... And make things better and stronger each year. Thank you.
Okay, um, anything else? Uh, Mr. Joe?
Thank you. Steve Drew, five foot two, down each road, uh... Uh, I believe he's eleven each way. Still, uh, I'm looking to do, uh... I gotta tell you, never to... Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Joe. Good evening, Susan Nevegar, and Mary Jurgen. As president of the West Milbrook Education Association, which includes the teachers, special class aides, custodians, and maintenance people, and the secretaries and building units, we'd like to publicly welcome you to contribute to the office. Collectively, we are proud of the district we have built, and the products that we turn out. Our eighty square miles are filled with creativity, brilliance, and hard work. We look forward to working together in a capacity that includes open communication and proactive thinking. To, uh, piggyback off Mr. Bailey's comment last month, when he encouraged you to leave your red and gray at the bottom of Westbrook Road. My... So... I have one thing to say. I personally left my red and gray, my plant stuff, at the bottom of Westbrook Road thirty-five years ago. I've never looked back. Westbrook is a great place to live. Love it.
Again, I thank you, and, uh, I assure, I assure you that my red and gray is, uh, no longer part of my wardrobe. Thank you, again.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? All favor? Okay, budget attendants, Mr. Bailey.
Yes, please, Mr. Bailey, you left our young, working in your description, but I don't take too much offense at that. Well preserved, maybe. I'd like to argue tonight that this vote is premature. And it's premature because the fate of the Hillcrest Building and our ownership and landlord activities in that building are tied into the fate of the proposed library in this town. And it's my belief that with the new elections of the town council, that within a period of two months, that is, by the end of February, that the council is going to address the library in terms of either voting up or down, support or financing, to both basically bond the core library construction and/or any space that the town would like to occupy, the meeting rooms. And when that vote is taken, whenever it's taken, it's going to be a signpost for what happens to Hillcrest. If the town approves funding for the library, we've all read in the papers over the last four and six months that the town's plan would appear to be to pull their community center tenants out of that building, out of Hillcrest, and move them either to the new library meeting rooms or the PAL building. Unfortunately, what's not been reported in the paper is that I think there are one or more tenants in the Hillcrest Building who are likely not going anywhere if there's a new library built or not. The most prominent of which, from what I can see, is the New Life Recovery Center, which occupies a fair amount of space at one arm and one arm of that building. If the new library is approved and most of the tenants leave, and New Life and/or others, because we do not have a rent roll for that building, are left behind, then the school board will change from being a passive owner of that structure, where in fact, the town right now is a self landlord, so they collect grants, they maintain the building on R P D app. We are the over landlord or owner. If they pull most everyone out, we will become an active landlord. And if that happens, we will be responsible for heating, lighting, cleaning, securing, and maintaining that building for whatever tenants are left. And as I say, I think there's going to be a vote coming up in the next couple of months in the council. It's going to be go forward on the library. If that vote is yes, then we can look to be an active landlord, probably sometime in 2016. I've talked to people on the library board, they've been actively, uh, putting their plans together, and I believe they will go into the ground with construction in 2015 if they get approved. And it's not a highly complex building, so it should be occupied 2016. If the vote goes against the library, then I think we face an entirely different situation in which we could be long-term owners and over landlords as we are today, and the lease that's in force, with the town being the self landlord for whatever tenants they keep. So once again, I think our vote at this time, if you read these actual provisions, they may not favor us if the town goes forward with the library, pulls the most of tenants out, and leaves us to be an active landlord. So what I would propose to do, I'd like to make a motion now to table this vote until the March meeting in 2015, thereby giving the town, uh, almost two and a half months, the town council, to go one way or another on the new library and give us some direction as to whether we're going to be a passive owner or an active landlord. And having the, uh, the thing you need to understand is, if we are an active landlord, these lease modifications restrict our use of already earned rent to performing capital improvements. If we're an active landlord, we have to use some of that money to buy heating oil, pay electric bills, hire custodians to do work, that is, to work with an active landlord. And there's really no sense in passing something down, lease modifications down, that not only restrict our use of that money going forward, if this actually happens, but further restrict us in the sense if you don't use that money on capital improvements for five years after the town comes out, they will then take back some of that money, which I find to be beyond the pale. We have earned that rent, it's sitting in an escrow account, it's not hurting anyone. It will be there the day the town comes out. And in my judgment, there's no judge in New Jersey who would not break that escrow in our favor at the time that the town comes out. We have earned the rent. We have paid good on our part of the bargain, which is to provide them with the building and they pay us the rent. And that's, that's the deal. So I would like to move right now to table this vote until the March meeting of the school board. Yes.
Oh. Because we didn't want to be a structured entity trying to, why they're going to, um, where they can pay.
If the council decides they don't want to go forward with the library, they affect the New York City, they want to go forward with Hillcrest, and they decide. Then, I think it's appropriate for us to take the money that's currently sitting nicely protected in the S bill and use that for capital improvements, because we have a perspective going forward of seeing a self landlord with tenants. However, I think the president mischaracterizes what we have today. We have a lease in force. It's a signed lease, it's in force, it's being reached, I think, by the other side. I think it governs the operation of that building on a day-to-day basis. And as I suggested before, and I saw in the process, I'm going to be the council here. Uh, the money sitting in the escrow account is potentially on a falling market. Which is what it's owed to us, and they've occupied the building, and what the authorities, all the open inventories, they're getting there, they're using it, they're getting them, and we got the money. To put it simply, these lease modifications would allow the town council to effectively intrude in our authority over how that money is spent. We need to not collect money here and give other people the right to take it back five years henceforth. We didn't spend it fast enough for their takes. That's exactly what these lease modifications do. And that's an intrusion on our authority and sovereignty over money that we've never earned. Money that's sitting in the escrow account that largely already came from rent in years past when they occupied the building. So this notion of, if we don't spend it fast enough, we go back to somebody else, and they're taking it, we burn it. And if we're in there as an active landlord, with New Life and anyone else, and they're in the college system, and we're spending some kind of inconvenience, rent a problem, no, that's the deal. That will ease and so for heat, we're going to heat the entire building with New Life. Who knows what that costs? We're going to have lights in here, this stuff, and whatever. And that is not capital improvements, that's operating expense. And lease mod restrict us from spending money in that kind of work, which we need to incur as an active landlord. So this, these lease modifications solve nothing. The current lease in force is just fine. The escrow account is just fine. The town council decides the money is going to operate or not. And more knows what it means.
Oh.
Yes.
Number one, you said something about the quiet eighteen thirty.
Discussion? Welcome.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
You are number forty.
Yes.
Yeah. I see.
You are number fifteen.
Discussion? Not. Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
You are the number sixteen, please.
Discussion?
Welcome. Yes.
Yes.
If you are the number seventeen, please.
Discussion?
Welcome. Yes. Yes.
If you're number ninety-nine, please.
Discussion? Yes. Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Everyone's word has had to call.
First now, I see.
Yes.
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 Discussion?
Welcome. Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Godwin. I'll see. One year. Discussion?
Welcome. Yes.
Yes. Education. Under anything, I mean, I don't know. Discussion?
Welcome. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Special. The first thing. I'll see the twenty-two. I mean, I'm wondering where, why, anywhere. The point is, I'm questioning why they're all. I think there's problems that were taken place on the last, um, year, coming here. This was the others, have a fact, we are very well, uh, there's my numbers, coming in fact. Uh, we can do that, you have a lot of people, and that, um, that probably was nine. Uh, this is a problem that I have, so, um, it's very, what only were, this is only five, uh, five years, I would. Uh, you were, you can, somewhere, yeah, you are. For a long time.
[coughs]
..........................................
[coughs]
.....................................................................
You said, "Don't make me feel like I'm..."
We're going around the horn here. In terms of the legislature, they passed a handful of bills regarding vocational education, uh, which if you've ever visited with the state planning tech unit, this is really funding security with the government being responsible for these issues. The Al's, uh, school campus, uh, but somehow the state, what you say, reveals that institutions are not getting their share. Uh, moving on to an cynical perspective, the real action this week has been in the courts. There are two very interesting cases that are looking their way to the courts. In one, some rural districts in the southern part of the state have gone to court claiming that they are not being funded as much as they should be. From what I think, we can take Abbott District and other disadvantaged districts. In the initial decision, which I believe was handed down last Friday, the first, uh, experienced court judge ruled against the plaintiffs, but I saw a headline where it says, "Plaintiffs' lawyers confident that they proceed with the case." So they're going to keep on that. Why is that important? Well, if the action prevails in court, then more state aid has to be sent to those districts. That means there's less saving of the other district. The other much bigger case that's now been funded in court, another court, is the state pension fund injustice, assuming the governor or breach of his promise to make timely payments to certain amount of money in the state pension plan, which called the governor citing Olympic season's not enough money, saying, "I'm not going to pay what I said." That would seem to carry even more weight to this matter of state, and he was actually held by court to put that money into the pension plan. Uh, that money is going to probably come on the money that the government uses as a school aid from the state. So that potentially can be trouble, and I would simply make this point in light of something our audience said earlier today, when he was talking about observance. We all, we know what happened, and the first thing we're having is that we've got this emergency here, not effectively seizing all money above the staff, the observant, the W T, the state, the gas, and so on. So I would suggest we, like, survive the callings in the next quarter, and then get up late about the downside of having that money sitting around, and the governor wouldn't show you that he has seized that money and won it. It can be facing, uh, against the crisis of funding the pension, the earth, and so forth. Um, and that's...
Thank you, Mr. Goplin. This is what's been on your mind lately, is education, education, and for... Why do you like, um, can this post be somebody who can be effective on, um, what kind of things? Do you... Goodness. All business. Thank you, Mr. Goplin. Your business. You want to be a student, so you have to be a student. You definitely want, uh, Eric, uh, who's been working on the... Who's been working on the... Who's been working on the... How... Who's been working on the... Have you got... Have you... Have you... Have you... Have you... Have you... Got it? It's time to get out. Really, um, that time... See that? [applause] One thing that I learned about Mr. Goplin, where he was this strong, he believed in what he was doing, and that also reminds me of his good... Mr. Goplin is always hearing, always listening, and was saying things without any opinion, that often will change, but when he comes down, he'll always stand on the line and tell me what he thinks. When I first came onto the board, Mr. Goplin, as I mentioned, he offered me a few questions I had at home, and he was saying that the board was together, and we had a very good time. Without a doubt, we had great decisions in the board, because we're all chosen and supported by the management. It's... [applause] And in the grateful appreciation of your dedicated service to the children of our community and family, please, it's something that... Oops. Yes.
I'd like to thank the board very much for this wonderful plaque and what I've been doing with companies. I would be remiss up here if I didn't thank my constituents and voting public for honoring me these last almost ten years, uh, with the seat on this board. Uh, this is truly a loving purpose to serve up here, and it's something that is, uh, a problem that you definitely said I had taken seriously from the beginning. I would be further amiss if I didn't thank certain unnamed people in the administration of the school, which is some of whom have become gone, but will live on in memory, uh, for taking me from my status as newbie. And you need to understand that school board members have been hard to serve. You start out with who was involved, and you progress long enough to get to a point where you're dangerous. Right now, I'm not saying very dangerous, but I'd like to thank, the name was Multitudes, in the administration, who's doing that's kind of our close family, uh, school board members, who serve our needs and support numbers on a day-to-day basis. I'd like to thank them very much. And I'd further like to point out that, and some of you may be operating in some kind of illusion, and you might have people come up and say, "Hey, I saw the tape of that meeting the other night, it looked like you were fainting through the entire meeting. Are you suffering up there? Is it bad? Is there anything I can do to help?" And I just wanted to point out that this has been a great hoax that I perpetrated for almost ten years. Actually, I enjoy every minute of this. And to tie that into my closing statement here, for always looking for goodness on the school board, and the key thing is, you have to love it. You have to love every bit of everything, be things that might frustrate us mentally, and you need to see the good in it. So I can tell you that whatever your skills and talents are, you will be challenged to the extreme in fulfilling your duties here to the maximum. And it gives me great plenty of money on the table, because I have been doing so throughout this table, uh, quite a few times, and I hope these school board members, which have been seen, and what that is. Uh, but I, I'm, I'm not finished with education issues, you know, I'm moving forward into my, what are called, old years, or that way. I still have enough energy, uh, to do things moving forward. So, thank you all very much. Thank you, both loyal people who show up at these meetings. It's no fun staring at a bunch of dumb seats. Uh, and, uh, I will be moving on, and I will, I will certainly miss certain aspects of this, but I told the BoTyc Simmons, the BoTyc Simmons now have a program which they're running that they call Super Tuesday. For those of you who don't know what our program with BID means, it's also called Super Tuesday. So now I will have no conflict between our Super Tuesday and BoTyc Simmons' Super Tuesday, which has highly discounted first run movie tickets. So there you can see the first step of it. And I'm like, I just, I just stand around the near, I should thank my significant husband, Chris Shaver, and sitting out in the audience, we're suffering through this, maybe for a little bit, and maybe not enjoying the place, but inside we're nine, three, four of you, so we're there, so thank you very much, Chris. Right? But, hey, snowmose is good for him.
Thank you. Uh, you were pointing toward a major... And then that point, Mr. Goplin, one of the youngest board members who's looking at this, um, he's coming to think that, you know, what he's taking from the district to the argument is, you know, the end of what he... As a young man, you will not have a very strong opinion than one changed at a high school level. Mr. Goplin and I also retired at, and I pretty much did tell people that he's very good at, he's had one pet. He has more energy than all of his clients have, and he's got a good level, especially in the... So that's been an article, uh, the research... This is a bribe, I'd like to... Have you heard that Mike Burry, oh, no, it's not here, did it? So can we take this now? Oh, okay, what's that?
I'd like to stop and give you a question, but you're asking everyone... I'm reading on a... I don't think... Some people off the... Good spot. And it's obvious that... This is what I thought, but... I'm... I'm... No. You are certain. But it's worth a good start. People... What's that? What? I'm... Why?
Don't do this. Four years. Uh, I certainly do want to go over the love and thank you for your service, and most of all for inviting me to your last meeting, which was my first meeting, and I wish we could be working together for a longer period of time, but certainly after speaking to both of you gentlemen, my door is open, please call at any time, stop if you're comfortable with me, I'd be happy to listen. Preferably, and listen. Um, I did want to make two other announcements today to the Rotary Club. Uh, I was invited along with some of our staff members, and they held a very nice luncheon for our special ed students, and the McAfee School was involved in the program, and also make the road school and our special ed department, and, uh, the children had a wonderful time there, a tradition there in between them. Santa Claus came, gave out gifts, and of course, they, they have a nice reception. Also, I want to thank the Rotary Society for that wonderful afternoon. And I do have an announcement, I'm very proud of young men that I just started working with, obviously. Uh, our new director will be our Director of Special Services in, uh, July. He's currently supervisor, and we just completed her doctorate in, uh, occupational therapy, so Elizabeth McQuaid is now doctor, Elizabeth McQuaid. Congratulations.